Thank you. We can go ahead and get started with our instructions to join our hybrid meeting. Ms. Rayburn, could you put those up on the screen for us, please?
I'd be happy to hang there just a moment. All right. In order to join our meeting this evening and any evening or any of the city's boards and commissions, you'll come to the city of Missoula's homepage. Down here in the first row is a button called Meetings. That's our portal for all of our public meetings. And there are instructions about how to join the meeting up here. Tonight's city council meeting is the 26th of September. Or PDF of the agenda if you wish to join. The HTML and PDF versions of the agenda will show you all of the attachments that are before the councils for their consideration at any of the meetings. At the top of the agenda of all of our agendas, you can click here and join via computer or you can call in. Sorry, I'm in a cuff.
Ms. Rayburn?
Yes.
We're having some connection issues, I think. You, your audio quality is quite poor out here in the chambers.
Okay. Let me check what's going on in Teams. Hang on, I'm gonna stop sharing for a sec. Okay. Is that any better?
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds better.
Okay, great. Back to my spiel. All right. If y'all missed the phone number the first time, here it is again. If you don't want to join via computer, you can also join via telephone. Our phone number is 406-384-6960. And Teams will prompt you for this phone conference ID number when you call in. You'll dial 387-736-445 and the pound sign. Once you enter the meeting, Teams will tell you these commands, but I will tell you them now. You would press star five to raise and lower your hand. And that would get you recognized for public comment. And be able to speak. And if you're listening to our meeting on some other device while you call in, you may want to mute that while you're on the phone with us. Otherwise, there will be an echo. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rayburn. A note for roll call that we have all members present with the exception of Mr. Kontos, Ms. Jones, and Ms. Savage. We have minutes from September 19th, 2022. Are there any changes to those minutes? Seeing none, those will stand approved. So public comment on items not listed on our agenda. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm assuming that under rules two and 31 that there'll be public input before you select who's being interviewed. But in any event, I want you to know, I brought a copy of the council rules with me since you are deciding who will advance to interviews for the council seat made vacant by interim mayor Hess's appointment. And it seems like you can never find a copy of your own rules when you need them. So I brought one. And I also brought with me this candle. And the reason I brought this candle is we might need to read these rules. And I'm very mindful of what interim mayor Hess has been telling news media about why we had to have this 12% property tax increases. He's stated categorically that we have to have them so we can, the city can keep the lights on, plow the snow and fill potholes. So in case the lights go off, I've brought this candle. Mr. Mayor, I do encourage you to use rule 27 of these council rules to declare an emergency immediately. And I don't, I just can't figure out how we're going to be able to have a special district succeed in acquiring the federal building if we can't light it. I also, I read about the city's purchase of the ground crusher snowplow. So I hope the mayor's warning about not being able to plow the snow is no longer operative. As for not being able to fill potholes, I have a suggestion. Scouts, Coast Guard Auxiliary and Civil Air Patrol could form volunteer brigades. And believe me, they can do. Well, I'd just like to say, yes, it is better to light one candle than to curse the darkness. And so I'm wondering when the mayor will, on the record, correct the Missoulian story falsely claiming that Councilor Carlino was censured by the council during the process that selected interim mayor Hess. I'm also wondering when the counselors who tried to scapegoat Mr. Carlino for the mockery made of the proceedings by back alley shenanigans in which he took no part will apologize to him on the record. Not before this candle would burn out, I'm sure, who just lied. I also brought a flashlight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Their public comment. Seeing none, we can move on to our scheduled committee meetings. Ms. Rayburn?
All right, let me share our committee's schedule on screen so everybody can follow along with me. You know, in just a second here. There we go. All right. We're gonna talk about committees this week Wednesday, September 28th, 2022. If you can believe it's the end of September already. All committees are held in person and you also have a virtual option to attend. So at the top of our committee's schedule, we have information about how to join these meetings. And they're also on our agenda portal that I showed earlier in the meeting. Our call in information is here on the top of the committee's schedule. And it's also on the top of each individual committee agenda. Sorry. Public Works and Mobility Committee will meet from 8:30 to 8:45. They'll be taking up a resolution to support recommit the reconnecting communities pilot program grant application from our transportation division. The Housing Redevelopment and Community Programs Committee will meet from nine to 11. They will have an update on the Midtown Master Plan. They will consider a resolution relating to $1,583,470.53 of tax increment renewal revenue refunding bonds in urban renewal district number two. of tax increment urban renewal revenue bonds in urban renewal district C. Excuse me, District Two, that's also in two. And that series is taxable. And the resolution authorizes the sale and issuance of bonds. And amends and restates a couple of prior resolutions adopted by the council. They will also, our Housing Redevelopment Community Program Committee, HRCP, will be taking up the Built for Zero and Missoula Coordinated Entry System Update and the Row Income Restricted Condominium Sales Project Update. Public Safety, Health and Operations Committee will meet from 12:15, excuse me, 11:15 to 12:20. They'll be taking up an agreement for Black Knight Security. The Fire Department's purchase of a Pierce Ascendant Ladder Truck and the Joint City County Bear Smart Resolution. And Committee of the Whole will round out the day from 1:00 to 5:30 PM. And they'll be conducting interviews for Ward Two to fill a vacancy. And that's our committee's schedule this week.
Thank you, Ms. Rayburn. Any change just to the committee's schedule? Okay, seeing none, we can move on to our consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda that were approved in city council committees generally unanimously. And we save time, council meetings by voting on these items as a package. Ms. Rayburn will read the list aloud, so citizens watching on MCAT or on our live stream will know what is on the consent agenda. And we'll invite community comment before we vote. Ms. Rayburn?
I'm here, I'm just trying to use my inhaler before I have to talk again. So hopefully I won't cough my way through this. Tonight's consent agenda has 10 items and I will share my screen. So folks watching at home on their computers can follow along. And then I'll read it out loud. So those of you who are just listening will also be able to know what's on it. The first item, as always, is to pay the city's bills. And this week, council's being asked to approve accounts payable in the amount of $1,709,000. Number two is to prove the purchase of one 2022 Toro Grand Grounds Master 7210D Tracked Commercial Mower and Snowplow for Traffic Services from Midland Implement of Billings, Montana for $61,361.62 with the attachments. This unit is a cooperative purchase through Sourcewell. Number three is the approve, to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Hinean Petroleum, Missoula, Montana, to provide vended fuel to the city of Missoula for a period of five years beginning October 1st, 2022 with a 3.5% discount off retail price pending the city attorney's review of the contract form. My apologies. Number four is to prove and authorize the mayor to sign with Dell Technologies in the amount of $253,417.80 for the purchase of computer, of a computer server cluster. And with Syrium Networks in the amount of $52,998.90 for the purchase of replacement computer switches. And with CDWG in the amount of $31,695 for the purchase of a redundant backup and disaster recovery computer appliance. Number six is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a contract with new concept coatings incorporated in an amount not to exceed $67,025 for the timber frame building maintenance at Silver and Fort Missoula Parks. Number six is to prove and authorize the mayor to sign a contract chain order with HDR Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $170,943.12 to expand the scope of engineering services for design and renovation of the North Side Pedestrian Bridge. Number seven is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a subrecipient agreement with Trout Unlimited for the McKinley Lake Decommissioning Project at a cost not to exceed $125,000. Number eight is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with Dolly Jam for consulting services for design bidding and construction services on the Kent Central Greenway that's located on, from South Russell to Regent. And that project is, and contractor at a cost not to exceed $84,627.90. And number nine is to adopt a resolution, Missoula City Council vacating a 15-foot by 278-foot utility easement within lot two of the Maggie Jacks subdivision that's located on Ally North Street. And finally, number 10 is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an addendum to professional services agreement number eight dash eight seven three seven with meta urban design for work related to the city's growth policy update for a total amount equal to $90,000.
Thank you, Ms. Rayburn. Any questions or comments or motions on the, to divide the question on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, is there public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none of that either, we can go to a roll call vote.
All right, on the consent agenda. Anderson?
Yes.
Becerra?
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Jones? She absent? I think so. Jordan?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Basika?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your vote? My software is not bringing back my votes, but I think we have three absent tonight, so we have nine eyes.
Okay, and the consent agenda is approved. We have no comments from city staff agencies, commissions, authorities, boards, the community forum or neighborhood councils. Nor do we have any special presentations or proclamations. We do have two items up for final consideration tonight. These were both held, we had a public hearing on both of these items last week. So we'll take them in the order listed on the agenda. The first item is the ordinance granting TDS Metrocom LLC a cable TV franchise. And I'll go first to Mr. Nugent, to Mr. Jim Nugent, to see if there's any additional staff presentation or any new information that became available since last week.
No, Your Honor, there's nothing else to add. And I think our consultant was pretty thorough last week. We haven't had any inquiries during the intervening period.
Thank you. Are there questions from council? Seeing none, I'd go to Ms. Becerra for a motion.
Thank you. I recommend that we adopt an ordinance regarding the tedious Metrocom LLC cable television franchise.
Thank you, that motion is in order. Any additional public comment on this item? Mr. Hunt?
Kevin, it's all right, Parkside Lane, I just want to reiterate what I said at the last meeting. And by the advisory that there's been no more information submitted, I presume that means the charter is still being dilatory in responding to the city, which is all the more reason there should be unanimous vote enthusiastically welcoming this new franchise to Missoula. We've had rotten provision of broadband services for a long time. I hope this will fix it.
Thank you. Any additional comments? We'll go to council comments in just a moment. Okay, back to council comments now, Mr. Carlino.
Yeah, I'm happy to support this motion. I think, you know, competition will be healthy here to hopefully get people fairer internet rates in Missoula. And long term, I hope I see it as a goal to have fair free public Wi-Fi or public internet for everybody in the United States long term. But I think this is a step in the right direction and I hope we approve it tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Basika?
I don't have any additional comment. I just wanted to echo what my colleague said. I think that competition is wonderful for a capitalistic society and I'm happy to support this.
Thank you. Seeing no additional comments, we can have a roll call vote on the motion.
Okay, on the ordinance, Becerra?
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Basika?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your vote? That is eight S's and four absent, or three absent, sorry. I'm still trying to get to 12. I'll have it stay hard.
All right, and the motion passes. Thanks, thank you, Ms. Rayburn. We, our second item up for final consideration is the end of year report for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Program Year 2021. And I'll first see if we have any new information from staff that has come up since last week or any additional staff presentation. Ms. Lyson?
Nothing new, thank you.
Okay. Any questions from council? Seeing none, I take a motion from Ms. West.
Sorry, multitasking here. So the motion is to adopt the program year 2021 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for Housing and Urban Development Funded Programs.
Thank you, the motion is in order. Any additional public comment on this? Right, seeing none, comments from, any comments from council? Ms. West?
I had a, I had a quick comment I wanted to make based on our, on the staff presentation last week. And I just wanted to point out that URA and Section 104D requirements are not set by the city. Those are federal requirements that all programs that receive CDBG or home funding have to meet. And I just wanted to clarify that because it maybe sounded like the responsibility fell on the city alone. And I think there's some tough decisions, decisions made, but federal rules are federal rules.
Thank you, Ms. West. Any additional comments? Okay, I just note that this is likely going to pass pretty quietly tonight, but these, these programs are impactful programs that do good work in our community. And I want to thank Ms. Lyson and, and the rest of her team for the work to implement. Spending federal money is complicated and, and the impact is, is felt. And so I want to, I want to thank everyone in the, in that program for their work administering these complicated grants and, and for bringing this forward tonight. And with that, we can have a roll call vote.
Okay, on the adoption of the program year Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, affectionately referred to it as the paper here at the city, probably other places too. Carlino?
Yes.
Jordan? Jordan?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yep.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Basika?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Becerra?
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your vote? That's eight eyes, three absent. Passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rayburn. We have no additional items for final consideration, so we can move on to our two public hearings. Our state law and our own council rules set guidelines for inviting community comment in a formal way on certain issues. We'll have a staff report on each item and then we'll invite community comment. Both of these items, we typically hold our, our public hearings open for a week, but both of these have timing constraints. And so these will be taken care of tonight. Our first public hearing is a resolution regarding proposed creation of a Missoula local government building special district. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Adams. For staff report.
Thank you very much. My name is John Adams. I'm the city's strategic projects administrator. And also on the line today, I believe, is Ryan Sudbury, Senior Deputy City Attorney. Has quite a bit of knowledge about this process as well. I'm gonna share my screen. So to recap where we are in the federal building, I'm hoping you're seeing a cover slide.
Yes, we are.
The city of Missoula and Missoula County have been working together for several years to jointly obtain the federal building located at 200 East Broadway. We will receive the building from the federal government at no cost. And in return, we will be bound to preserve the historic character of the building in perpetuity. After acquisition, the city and county will rehabilitate the building and make it into the administrative and public services hub of the two entities. The U.S. General Services Administration, GSA, interprets the statute establishing the Historic Surplus Property Program under which we'll receive the building to require that it transfer ownership of the building to a single local government entity. So we intend to create a joint special district under Montana Code Title VII, Chapter 11, Part 10. So special districts created under this authority are discreet legal expressions of local government that depending on the authority delegated to them can implement programs, administer budgets, employ personnel, purchase property, et cetera. So typically, we see them deployed for a single particular need such as rehabilitation to fairgrounds or for a discreet geographic, something that's, is a discreet geographic need, like a local park. But instead, we're going to use it to create an ownership mechanism. The Missoula Local Government Building Special District, sorry, it's such a mouthful, won't encompass any properties other than the 200 East Broadway property itself. And it won't be able to levy assessments on any property owners except itself. It's really just a way to create a single government entity that can catch the building. The state law sets out a very specific process for creating a special district, which includes, over the course of about three months, a public hearing on creation of the special district, approval of a resolution of intention to create the special district, a second public hearing, approval of an interlocal agreement between the entities creating the district that establishes how it will be governed, and approval of a resolution establishing the district. So what council has before today are to hold the first public hearing on the proposed district and to consider a resolution stating the city's intention to create a special district and to direct staff to take the necessary steps to notify landowners within the proposed special district, which is just the federal government and to otherwise promulgate the intended action through publication. The Board of County Commissioners will address the same matter tomorrow. And if all goes well, both council and board will hold another public hearing and make a final choice on the special district in December. I want to say a little bit more about the proposed interlocal agreement between the city and county, which is included as an exhibit to the proposed resolution. The interlocal is basically a contract between city and county articulating how we'll make decisions about the special district. So here are some highlights. The interlocal creates an administrative body consisting of the chief administrative officers of the city and the county, barring a choice to do something different by either the board or the council. And, and the administrative body will make general decisions about the building, such as approved contracts for operation or improvement of the building. The interlocal requires that the administrative body annually propose a building budget to submit to council and the Board of County Commissioners for their respective consideration. The interlocal establishes that the city and county will pay ongoing costs for operating the building based on the square feet. Each entity is utilizing in the building with a default starting point of 50/50. The interlocal lays out the process by which either the city or county could withdraw from the special district. The idea here is that the withdrawing party would be compensated for the value of improvements that it's contributed to the building appropriately depreciated, but would not receive any compensation for the value of the building itself. And that's partly because we're not paying anything for the building and partly because we wanted to provide a disincentive to withdraw while accepting the reality that a divorce could, could happen. And the interlocal provides that if the city and the county are at loggerheads on something with respect to the building, that neither the administrative body nor subsequently the council and board can resolve, that the dispute would go to binding mediation. And the interlocal establishes the county as the fiscal agent for the And the interlocal establishes the county as the fiscal agent for the special district with such costs as that may incur being included in the budget for the district annually. So the Missoula Local Government Building Special District will own the federal building, and the city and county will jointly manage the special district according to the interlocal between them. The interlocal could be amended or improved from time to time with the agreement of both city council and Board of County Commissioners. And that's, that's the story, I'm available for questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Adams. We can, at this point, I'll open the public hearing, would anyone like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, any, any questions from council members? Ms. Becerra.
Thank you. John, would dissolving the agreement, for whatever reason, require public, a public process also?
Would be a decision, so for either entity to initiate dissolution would require an act by the governing body, so board or city council, so it would require that public process, would not require, I my recollection of code, we'd have to dissolve according to the Montana Code that establishes the, now, let's ask, if you don't mind, we might turn to Ryan and see if he recalls whether there is a special process for dissolution above and beyond a simple declaration by the governing body in Montana Code.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I don't remember, but I am going to venture to pull it up right now to make sure there is a provision in Part 10 of Chapter 11, Title VII, that talks about dissolution. I don't recall there being a public hearing requirement. But there is, the governing body does have to pass a resolution of intention to dissolve the special district, so there is there's sort of, that happens, and then there's notice that, I mean, it's, this is, the process traditionally has and affects private property owners, so you want to give them notice of what's going to happen, how it's going to affect their private property. And there are, there is an opportunity to register protests. And then there's a section on how to resolve debts and things like that, but for the most part, it's, it's just an action, notice action by the governing body through the resolutions, kind of the opposite of this process, so we have to have a resolution, and we're going to dissolve it. We post notice of that, take any protests that are registered, and then have a final decision after the protests are considered. And then if dissolution moves forward, then it initiates the process laid out in the interlocal agreement, which has some accounting elements involved to value the sort of take, take stock of the investments that were made, depreciate those appropriately in line with accounting principles, and then value the, the amount of money that the dissolving party, the withdrawing party will need to be paid out, and then there's a mechanism in the interlocal to pay that out over a term of years.
Well, good.
Thanks for that, I, I guess what I'm trying to get at is that the public via this public hearing and, and previous meetings has had access to knowing about this, so I, I would like to make sure that if for some reason the agreement has to be dissolved, that there's enough public process for the public to be informed that that has come to a termination. And additionally, I think it would be important to know that if, say, for some reason, the agreement is dissolved, as you mentioned, there's several clauses in there, including, you know, the, the party that departs the, the agreement would be at a financial loss in essence, because it would get at the depreciated cost of investments and, and whatnot, but that to me implies that whoever is remaining takes over the entire, you know, is responsible for the entire building renewal, remodel, whatever, and, and that requires public process, so I know I'm trying, I'm trying to come up with many potential scenarios, but I just would hate for us to be in a situation where, say, the county steps out and then the city is holding the proverbial bag, and, you know, the, the, I, I think the, the community has a, needs to have a chance to participate.
Mr. Sudbury?
Yeah, I mean, just to follow up, we did consider that in these discussions, both, from both sides, the city and the county staff that were involved. And so we, we tried to provide, like John said, disincentive for this to occur. In the event that, let's say, in your example, the county has decided to withdraw or, or dissolve the special district, and the city would be looking at the possibility of holding the bag on the building. The city could make the decision to just itself also withdraw, and then both parties would simply turn the building back over to the GSA, we could just kind of give it back. We may not want to do that if we've invested a significant amount of money, but in the event, in, in an example or a scenario where the city and the county took the building, did, you know, a significant amount of investigation and engineering and architectural analysis, and they decided it, it was going to just cost just an ungodly amount of money to rehab the building, to make it usable for our purposes, we could all just decide to, you know, step back and give, give the building back to the GSA, dissolve the special district, and, and kind of be done with it, so that, that possibility is out there as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Basika.
Thanks, I had two questions, the first one is, there is a concern from constituent about the, the employee parking issue where, where all the employees are going to be parking, because downtown parking is kind of crowded at the moment, so there's that question, and then the other one is, is there a possibility to expand the special districts to include adjacent or nearby property owners in the future without council allowing it?
The, the answer to the second question is straightforward. Montana Code sets out a process for expanding a district, and it's essentially identical to the process for establishing a special district, so if, if, if there were, I mean, it's hard for me to imagine what that reason would be to expand the district, but but if you wanted to, you'd have to go through a process exactly like this in order to make that happen. And both entities would have to sign on to that, of course. And with regard to the first question, we're going to have to do some planning around the streetscape to ensure that there's adequate, for example, handicapped parking and so on and so forth, quick access parking to the federal building. But in general, we expect that, like, that we expect that just as we don't require downtown business to provide parking, that we won't be providing parking for employees. That's counter to what we would hope for out of the downtown master plan. And additionally, you know, we have a system right now where all the employees that would be moving to the federal building are required to park themselves, or take transit, or walk or bike to buildings that are only two blocks away, and so there are inevitably going to be changes and concerns, but in general, our belief is that the situation works reasonably well now, and worked reasonably well when there were 400 Forest Service employees there who also weren't provided parking, and that it will work well again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Nugent, would you like to add anything? Jim, I see your hand is up, I just wanted to see if you wanted to add anything.
Sorry, I thought you'd called on Stacy Anderson right away. I just wanted to note for some of the earlier questions that there is a state statute about dissolution of the special district, and if someone was going to try and withdraw, perhaps that could be utilized as a mechanism for someone withdrawing, and then there'll only be one party to the special district. And that dissolution statute requires that there be a resolution of intention adopted by the governing body, and then publish notice of the resolution of intention to dissolve. So it might be easy to just follow that dissolution statute and provide the public, the information that there was concern that they received.
Thank you, any additional questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we can, we've had a public hearing, we can have a roll call vote.
We don't have a motion yet.
Yeah, thanks, so Ms. Anderson, I'll go to you for a motion.
One moment, please, popping between screens, and of course, it shut down at that exact moment, so I would like to move that adopt a resolution relating to the creation of the Missoula Local Government Building Special Districts and declaring it to be the intention of the city council to create a special district to provide for the acquisition, ownership, improvement, maintenance, operation, and administration of the federal building located at 200 East Broadway.
Thank you, that motion is in order, and I'll go back for comment, I think I skipped over that a bit, any, any council discussion, Ms. Basika?
I've been really torn about this. Oh gosh, ever since it first came across our table. Because, yes, we do need the additional space, but we, yeah, we're going to acquire it with no additional cost to us, but it's going to cost over $40 million to remodel. And at this time, I think that a lot of, a lot of Missoulians are really struggling, and I don't think that we should spend our hard-earned tax dollars on this at the moment. Yes, that means that we might lose it, and we might have to find another property at the time, but I do think that we needed to postpone this project, and I have had a lot of constituents reach out to me about this, and don't really agree with it, and since I'm, I'm so torn about it, I'm going to, I'm going to err on the constituent side that have reached out to me, so I'm not going to be supporting this.
Thank you, anyone else care to comment tonight? Mr. Nugent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I will be supporting this, I think that if you just kind of compare it to a, a normal real estate acquisition, we're still very early in the process, and there's a lot of due diligence and things like that, it sounds like there are allowable exits if, if those concerns or costs become too burdensome in the next few months, so I agree with you that there's still a lot that we need to know and learn, but I think that we still have outs, and I think we need to continue with the process of investigating it.
Ms. West, okay. Anyone else? Ms. Basika?
I wanted to thank you, Mr. Nugent, for saying that there are a lot of outs, and I, I do agree with you, that, that does make me feel a lot better about this, because I'm assuming that it's going to pass tonight, I just, I still personally can't support it, but I'm, I'm, I'm happy that we have some options in the future, so thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, it's a great point, and, and we have an asset in the form of our current city hall that has tremendous value of being a full block in downtown, which could provide some opportunities throughout this process. And I think one of the things that's been compelling to me throughout this process is that the, the cost to renovate the federal building and, and preserve a historic asset, but also renovate it for our current needs, is likely a lot cheaper than, than the alternatives. So on balance, I think this is really a, a very exciting opportunity to preserve a piece of history and make a space for local government that is, that, that meets our needs, and that there's lots of opportunities through things like our current city hall to provide us a little bit of flexibility in how that, that process goes down. Anyone else tonight? Okay, we can have a roll call vote, Ms. Raybine.
Okay, on the resolution, Jordan.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Basika?
No.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Carlini?
Yes.
And would any of you like to change your vote, that is seven ayes, one nay, and three absent.
Great, thank you Ms. Raybine, the motion passes. Our second and final public hearing is the Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant, a memorandum of understanding regarding this grant, and Chief White is here to present our public hearing tonight. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, Jason White, Chief of Police, Missoula Police Department. I'm here to talk about the JAG or Justice Assistance Grant that we get annually from the Federal Department of Justice. The city has been receiving this grant, it's come under a couple different names, but we have been receiving this money for, since 1993, just for historical context, it's not something that's new. So every year, we have to bring forward how we're going to spend the money for a public hearing, so that is the purpose of this. So the United States Department of Justice has given us $62,922 for this, for this year. Of that, we have an agreement with the Missoula County Sheriff's Office to share the money with them. So $13,751 will go to the Missoula County Sheriff's Office, so they, to help offset property clerk salary. The remaining wage, or the remaining money will be used in the Missoula Police Department. $17,550 will be used to continue the second year of our online warrant program that we use with municipal court and district court, that allows our officers to do electronic warrants, search warrants, those types of things through the court, so all that's processed electronically. We'd like to continue the second year of our online training and records subscription, that was something that we implemented a year ago, that consolidated all of our training records from three historic systems into one, and allows us to provide current, modern updated training to our officers every day in briefing through this national service. And the last is $23,548 to purchase night vision systems for our SWAT team. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Great, thank you, Chief White, we'll, we'll go first to public comments, so I'd open the public hearing on this item, and anyone wishes to make a comment, come on up.
Thank you, Kevin at Saray Parkside Lane. I spent over 30 years as a criminal defense attorney, and I just want to stress to the council how important it is that your local authorities in your courts are, have their act together as far as being able to process electronic search warrant applications, if you can't do that, what happens is people like me are going to get a lot of evidence thrown out, and you're going to lose a lot of convictions. It also improves the overall compliance by departments with what's required by the Fourth Amendment and by Article 1, Section 10 and 11 of the Montana Constitution. So these all sound like very reasonable expenditures, I don't hear anything about license plate readers and facial recognition or anything like that, so I urge you to approve it.
Thank you, sir, anyone else? Seeing none, we, this item is time sensitive, there's a grant, there's a deadline on this, so I will close the public hearing and take questions from council. Ms. Cheryl?
Thanks, and Mr. Hunt, I appreciate your comments. Chief White, I'm curious how much we received last year, like, has this been, can you give us some history on the amounts that have been received?
It's very similar to what we received this year, there's, it, it is, it stayed within a thousand bucks every year that I've been here.
Any additional questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll go back to Ms. Anderson for motion.
All right, I'm on the ball now. I make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the Edward Byrne Justice Assistant Grant Memorandum of Understanding between the County of Missoula and the City of Missoula and the Associated Ward Documents.
Thank you, that motion is in order, any discussion from council? All right, seeing none, we've had a public hearing, we can have a roll call vote.
Okay, on the memorandum of understanding. Nugent.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Basika.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Carlyne?
Yes.
And Jordan?
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your vote? That is eight ayes and three absent.
Thanks, and the motion passes. Thank you, Chief White. That concludes our-
Thank you, sir.
Thanks. That concludes our public hearings. There are no committee reports. We do have an item of new business, and this is our word to vacancy appointment. What I'd like to do is go to Ms. Raybine briefly for a refresher on the process and timeline, and then we'll take public comment, and then we will nominate applicants to be interviewed at the Committee of the Whole Meeting this Wednesday. Ms. Raybine, would you mind giving us a brief rundown on process and timeline?
I'd be delighted. So the process that the council used to appoint mayor is largely the same set of rules and laws that are required to appoint any elected office, including this vacancy that council is doing in Ward 2. The state law requires that city council complete its work on this appointment within 30 days of the vacancy. And the council's process requires that we, required that we solicit applications. We've done so. We've received six applications from citizens who live inward to and are registered voters who are before you this evening. And according to your city council rules, each councilperson may select one of the folks who have applied, if you wish, to interview. Interviews are going to be connected this coming Wednesday between 1:00 and 5:30 at the conclusion of interviews. We have some time allotted for public comment. We have eight interview questions, and there were some interview questions that were required as part of the application process, and all of those items are on the city's website. So folks can look at the applicants and see who applied to serve in Ward 2 and offer their comments, both at the Committee of the Whole Meeting this coming Wednesday, likely toward the end of that time period that they're meeting, closer to 5:30, depending on how many interviews that we can, we, that council selects. And then on Monday, that, sorry, I don't have a calendar in front of me, so I'm winging it. Monday, the third. Next week, Monday. October, yeah. Let's not do November yet. That would be bad. I don't like missing Halloween. So on Monday, October 3rd, the city council, under new business, will have this item to appoint the representative to Ward 2. And council will be able to nominate folks who were interviewed and vote to select the Ward 2 representative. And as we saw during the mayor interviews or mayor appointment process, if there are two successive roll call votes where the votes are exactly the same each time, new nominations may be taken. And then the council's deadline on this item is October 14th. The new appointee must be sworn in on or before that date. So that's the 30 days from when, whence the vacancy occurred. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Any questions on that process? Okay, I think at this time, we'd go to public comment, if anyone wish, would like to make public comment. Ms. Avery?
Hi, Teagan Avery, 4009 O'Leary Street. By now, you're all familiar with me after weeks of consistent attendance, which I bring up just to demonstrate that I show up and I am reliable, which is an essential quality of a council member. And I also hope it shows that by showing up for myself, that you see how I will show up for my constituents in Ward 2 and be here to advocate for them every Monday and every Wednesday. In the interest of time and in the hope of having a longer discussion on Wednesday in the interview, I will leave it at that, but thank you all for having me, and I hope you consider me for Ward 2. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Avery. Anyone else tonight? Mr. Rowan?
Hi, my name is Jack Rowan, 1624 Howell Street. Been a resident of Missoula for 28 years and lived on, in the West Side for 13 of those years. And I also just wanted to reiterate that I'm excited to be a part of this process. I'm looking, hoping that I'll be invited to be interviewed on Wednesday, and I look forward to sharing any more information that you would like to know about me.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Have not Surry Parkside Lane. I'd like to suggest that the two persons who just, just spoke be advanced in this process and for the reasons they stated. And so I'm going to, well, and with regard to Ms. Avery, I just want to stress again that her experience with evidence-based metrics when it comes to budgeting, I think is something is incredibly important for the council to get a handle on and that this is important. You know, people on the left especially have great concern in making sure that there's much efficiency and effectiveness in expenditure of public funds, and people on the right have the same concern about not wasting public funds. And the liberals who want to spend the money for a good cause, that should, that should give them solace as well. So I think that's a good reason to have someone like Ms. Avery. I want to, I want to speak mostly now about Derek Hitt. He's, he's served as president of the Missoula Central Labor Council, and he's been a carpenter organizer as well. And I think this is important. He's, he's one of these people who, who's, who's, who advocates, you know, rank-and-file oriented unions, not business unions that just take people's money. And I noted that in the committee meetings, an excellent selection was made to chair your land use committee, Mr. Nugent, who, you know, brings an MPA, and he has a lot of experience, of course, in real estate, and it was said that this would be very valuable in dealing with the housing crisis. And I think that, I think also having, you know, been, been the vice, a vice president in Berkshire Hathaway certainly provides a perspective. But I want to note that it's just the way it is, that there's a very heavy representation of capital, both on the council and on its committees and in government in general. And it's about time that labor was represented, that workers were represented, not just capital. The people who make the capital for the capitalists need to be represented. And if you want to have a good, solid person who will bring to the table that perspective, you can't resolve the housing crisis by just looking at the capitalist, the capital side. You gotta look at the worker's side. You gotta look at the, the people, the working people in this town, the people who can't afford even to work, and what, but, what's caught, what is costing them to try to have housing in this town? Not just to buy housing, not just to stay here, for the kids to stay here, but even be able to get a darned place to rent. And for this reason, you should accommodate someone from labor, someone from the working class, someone who is for workers all the time, someone who is not on the side from the side of capital, but who is cooperative, who is a collaborationist, who's an organizer, and who's a, who's a common rank-and-file person of the people. And so with that, I strongly urge you to bring Derek Hitt forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight? Okay, seeing none, I'll note that our online attendees, no one has their hand up. So at this point, we can, we can move to nominations. And so I would entertain, I'll just, I'll just entertain the nominations as they come up. Mr. Nugent first?
Sure, I'd like to recommend Teagan Avery for an interview.
Ms. Cheryl?
I'd like to nominate Derek Hitt for an interview.
Okay. I saw Ms. West next.
I would like to nominate Jack Rowan.
Ms. Vasika?
I'd like to nominate Rebecca Dawson.
And Ms. Sarah?
I'd like to nominate Sierra Farmer.
And Cheryl?
And I'd like to nominate Charles Shane.
Okay, so we have six applicants and six nominees, and six names in a, in a, in a hard hat.
Six names in a hard hat. No favoritism. My family's in highway construction. This is only half, it was in my car. So our first, let me grab my pencil here so I can mark out the numbers. Sierra Farmer has first interview. The folks watching at home, the Teagan Avery will have the second interview. Derek Hitt will have the third interview. And Cheryl Shane is gonna have her fourth interview. Here, too. Jack or John Rowan has the fifth slot. And I'll pull the last one out, shall I? That's Rebecca Dawson. She'll be interview number six. So for folks who are watching, let's recap. Interviews will be this Wednesday. Starting, the committee meeting will start at 1:00, first interview will be at 1:05. Interviews will be 35 minutes long. There's five minutes break between each one. And I will send out a note to the candidates to let them know what time their interviews are, if they weren't here or didn't hear. And we will see everybody Wednesday. I will provide some timing assistance for the interviews. So about 15 minutes in, I'll let the candidates know that, how much time they have, or, I don't remember. Maybe it was 15 minutes left. I'd let them know, or 15 minutes in. I don't remember what I said in the email to them this afternoon. And then when they have five minutes left, I'll let them know so they can kind of pace their interview, their eight interview questions. They will be asked around Robin's style by the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. So communications from the mayor, I'll pass tonight, and we can start general comments of city council members with Ms. Anderson.
I will pass.
Ms. West?
I just have a general, I guess, comment on the structure of government. Obviously, we have three branches, and then often there's said that we have a fourth branch that keeps the other three in check, which is the press. And I do not think that it is appropriate for a member of an elected body to reach out and dictate what a journalist should or should not say.
Mr. Nugent?
I'm just gonna remind everybody about the Midtown Association or the Midtown Master Plan Listening and Idea Event at the YMCA tomorrow. Drop in anytime from 6:00 to 8:00. I know I pitched this last week too, but it's tomorrow, and it's really exciting. So go, they have childcare. You can go anytime from 6:00 to 8:00.
Ms. Sarah?
I'm sure everyone has seen a few bears around town, but please be very bear-aware. They're out everywhere. Well, not everywhere, but in those neighborhoods that tend to have a lot of yummy food for bears to get before hibernation. So please remove any attractants. Just, just know that they are around and hungry. Thanks.
Ms. Carlyne?
Oh, oh, yeah, I was just gonna say that I was happy that we picked all the applicants to interview. It's really hard to choose who's gonna be the next city council person based off of just an application or even just based off of an application in a short interview. There should be thousands of public questions, so I was just pleased to see that we're gonna interview everybody, and I look forward to learning more from all the applicants.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. I just wanted to let folks know about a question and answer session being put on by the Housing Advocate Network, which is part of MIC. They're gonna be talking about how people end up being homeless, what housing support resources are available in the community, and what can everyday people do to support their neighbors experiencing homelessness or housing insecurity. This is going to occur this Thursday, the 29th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the First United Methodist Church. They're gonna have people from the Pabirella there. They're gonna have our, our, one of my favorite people, Teresa Williams from the Missoula County Crisis Intervention Team there to answer questions and just host a forum to find out more about what's happening with our folks who are, who are housing, who are having troubles with housing, and childcare will be provided. Thank you.
Ms. Cheryl?
Yeah, thanks. First, I want to thank all of our applicants. I'm happy too that we're interviewing all of them. I thought it was a really great pool, a very diverse pool. So I'm, you know, from Missoula, of course, but I'm excited about that. I also just want to say that, based on a conference I just went, went to, we're gonna have a presentation in a couple weeks on the Inflation Reduction Act, and I think that it is going to, it is a game changer in the climate, the fight against climate change. So if you guys have any questions and if press is out there, I think it's, it's gonna be as much of a game changer as we're gonna get, and we're going to be positioning ourselves to try to get as much of that money as we can going forward. So I look forward to hearing more about it myself.
And Ms. Vasika?
Thanks. There's a couple of things I wanted to mention tonight. First of all, I did want to thank all of our applicants, and like my former colleagues have said, I'm very happy that we can interview all of them, because it is really hard to pick our next city councillor from a piece of paper. Also, I am very impressed with our street department. I, I report potholes a lot, and I go on the same route or a different route every other day, and then I report a pothole, and then it seems like a day later or two days later, it's fixed. So I'm very impressed with that. And if you ever do see a pothole, you can call 552-6360 and report the pothole, or you can go to the Report a Pothole form and just go to the City of Missoula website, and you can just put in "pothole" in the search bar, and that should, that should direct you to the right location. I also wanted to thank everybody for coming out to the parade, the homecoming parade on Saturday, and then also the monster trucks and tough trucks on, on Saturday as well. My husband got second and third, so I'm very proud of him. Also, I went to the Fall Festival at the Fort yesterday, and my little kiddo rode a miniature horse, and I wanted to thank everybody that put that on. All you had to do was just bring a can or a non-perishable food item to the food bank. So I wanted to thank everybody who put that on. It was a, it was a really fun event, a very fun Sunday. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vasika. We have no miscellaneous communications reports or announcements, but for our standing administratively approved agreement report. So with no further business, we will be adjourned.